Order at seven oh four, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda. I guess we have a couple of changes here, additions?
Well, we should make a motion to approve the agenda first.
That would be wonderful. Okay, let's do that.
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Amending the agenda? Joe, do you have something?
Looking at me?
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I don't know whether this was what you were thinking about, but I had discussed with Mike the fact that the sailing program is interested in purchasing a very well-priced, very good-shaped sail sunfish from an owner in New Hampshire, and I would appreciate if that could be added to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, and we have, Mike, we have two other appointments?
Correct.
One, the Cemetery Commission, one for the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's on the agenda, I believe.
It's a Cedrak.
And Cedrak, I'm sorry.
Do we actually have to change the agenda? We just add them into the board appointments that are already there?
That would be, that would be fine.
Okay, then that's one.
I thought we put Ted in last time. I thought he went in when he put the whole group in.
I guess we didn't have this one.
We can check the minutes and then we'll know.
Yeah, the minutes might have, but he sent this to Karen saying he wanted to be on.
No, you already put him in last week.
Okay, so he was, maybe he didn't know that. He was approved.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then that was taken care of, alright.
Asked to be approved.
Okay, how about the other, the Kevin Fenton Cemetery Association?
That was not approved prior.
That was not approved?
Yeah.
Okay, Cemetery Commission? Where do you want to put that in, folks?
With the board appointments with Mike Scovars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see Ted Mulner in the minutes.
Last week?
Yes, last meeting.
I sent him out to our board this morning.
No, what I'm saying, Mary, is I don't see, I'm reading the minutes right now.
Our Combs made a motion to appoint Ted Mulner, Martha Clifford, Mary McIntyre, Cedrak.
Okay, so Ted Mulner is all set, right?
Yes.
He's all set, okay.
Dick, you, you made the motion.
And I sent it to you on an email today.
I can't read, that's all. Other than that, we're fine.
Okay.
I got to learn how to read again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One point is, it says Cemetery Association. It's supposed to be the historic cemetery. But he's not being appointed to the regular.
To the hillside?
The hillside, yeah.
The hillside, okay, alright. Okay, anything else on the agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving it with the corrections, additions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Approval of the minutes, we also seem to have some additional minutes. Which I believe Mike did in.
Don't add those in there. Those are just for you.
Oh, whoa, 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 alright, okay, alrighty.
Going after Adam, and that's the public safety minutes.
Okay.
We'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for the Pluckboard Meeting Monday, June 27th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Mary, Mary Lee, you have?
Well, there's a couple changes here, if I can find them.
Okay.
Page three, down, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph. It says, ML Harris stated, TIRSA has, and it's the cost of running the building. We got that cost from the Slate Valley, not from TIRSA. And the committee asked the three groups to get together to discuss if they, if they can work space out.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, what did you say? What was that again? The last one?
Okay, it's, it says ML Harris stated, TIRSA has.
Yeah.
And it isn't, it's, I may have stated it, but it would have been Slate Valley that had the costs, not, not TIRSA. And then Joe has worked over them as well. But the committee asked all three groups to get together and see if they could work out different spaces in the building. Page six, yes, page six. First long paragraph, what's, what is in bold print, is, is ours spouting made to approve, it should be made a motion to approve. And then further down, the next to last paragraph. Dick questioned June 27th letter, if it should be addressed now or later, Shirley Sequin. Thanked, question mark, question mark, question mark. I don't know who that question mark is either.
That was Conway Clark.
What was the name?
Conway Clark, Brent Clarkson.
That's the only thing I can come up quickly.
Joe?
Two, on page three, the first paragraph, second line. P. Mantello created a call of nature for that in the new reporting system. I don't think he said call of nature, he might have said call in. It seemed to me that he was telling us that he created a new category for logging certain types of community service hours. And I'm not sure what the best way to say that is, but call of nature is probably not it.
I'll stop with P. to be the one.
Yeah. And on page four, first bold heading, the word budget is misspelled. And I believe that's it.
That's it, okay.
I'm all set.
Dick, you're all set, I'm all set. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' comments and/or concerns not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am?
Where would you like me, sir? Right here?
The microphone's up here, Pat, so as long as, if you can get up closer, you don't need to stand on top of it, but I think that'll do it.
Pat Schreeter from Castleton, I have a written statement I just wanted to read. I am saddened and disappointed by the lack of foresight shown by the select boards of Hubbardton and Castleton in the decision to sell CVS building to a private entity. This is truly a blow to the citizens of these communities. Concerns were mentioned that the proposal submitted by the Recreation Department and the Boys and Girls Club would not cover the operating cost of the building. The original cost given to the committee, which was composed of private citizens and members of the Rec. Department and the Boys and Girls Club, was $80,000. With figures based on other Rec. Departments from cities all over the state, a 25% utilization of Rec. Program memberships, plus the rental income from the Boys and Girls Club and the daycare covered the operating cost. It was expected the program would grow in intervals over two to three years. Other revenue avenues were to be accomplished through grant writing and fundraising. The citizens were committed to have this vision succeed. With that being said, it seems the revenue-producing capabilities of a robust Rec. Department under the leadership of a full-time director was not even considered. Rather, the sentiment of quote taxpayer burden unquote was the focus. If a lease is negotiated with the Rec. Department and the private entity owner of the building, there's no budget for that in the Rec. Department's figures. Ultimately, the taxpayer will need to provide the lease money by an increase in the Rec. Department's budget. Ironic, isn't it?
Thank you, Pat.
I'd like that submitted, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for Pat? Seeing none, thank you very much, Pat. Any other citizens who wish to address the board?
Probably just to Mike.
Mary McIntyre?
Mary McIntyre, I happen to be a member of the Castleton Economic Development Revitalization Advisory Committee, known as Cedrak. I was appointed in 2020 to such a board by its title only. People are aware that we're an advisory committee. We attended many of these meetings, either myself for the Castleton Village School and the town maintaining ownership of it for recreational purposes. And our committee recommended that we keep it. In the minutes, I didn't see any recollection or anyone even discuss that a whole board suggested we keep it. I devote my time, so do our board members. We did a lot of studying. Many of us have lived in this town, many of us have volunteered. I was not able to make that meeting because I was sick. But I am extremely disappointed, and I'm disappointed that I'm putting forth my volunteer hours, and they were totally disregarded. And I do believe that there was a plan, and I do believe that it's very, very hard to get volunteers. You have nothing to work with. You've got to give volunteers something to work with. And we're always having to scratch to find anything in this town, to come up with anything. It's hard to make something out of nothing. And that's what I feel, that you've only made this Castleton Economic Development Revitalization Advisory Committee just in name only. Maybe to do dirty work, you really not listening, not if you didn't mention that we made an advisory letter because we did do our marketing. It's all the same thing.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Seeing none? Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Items not on the agenda? Sean, you're the only other one here.
There's people on Zoom too.
Pardon?
There's people on Zoom.
Yeah.
Actually, a couple of things. First, just to kind of, not to jump on the scene of the village school, but I previously served on the Castleton Planning Commission a little less than 10 years ago. And we spent money out of a grant to have an economic study done for the town to identify things that the town needed. And how we could potentially rework zoning in different areas to draw families into this town and make it a more sustainable community for people to actually live here and have people here. I definitely have to agree with Ms. McIntyre on this one because with the Rec. Committee, you want to go ahead and attract families to be here, but if you don't have a facility, you don't have an atmosphere that's welcoming, they aren't going to be here. That's just not going to happen. It's the same thing when it comes to economical and sustainable jobs. If you don't have, have those things here, people aren't going to be here. We've run into a lot of, a lot of brick walls, different committees have over the years, where a small vocal group sometimes gets the attention, but really isn't what's actually best overall for the town. I, I understand that we are heading towards tough economic times with bargaining taxpayers, with a lot of different things happening in town, not necessarily things that we're asking for, things that are coming down from up earlier and beyond. But the recreation lifestyle, giving youth in this community something to do, that's important. When I was, I grew up here in this town, the Recreation Department was a booming thing, and it was heading in the direction. And then we started heading into more level funded budgeting, and the Rec. Department tanked. And when it did, a lot of programs at Crystal Beach went right down the drains, and that's starting to come back now. I mean, you're, you pull the plug off something, it's almost like when you're keeping your food cool in the fridge. Well, if you just pull the plug and everything's warm, well, you're going to, you're going to spend hours upon hours before you can get back down to temperature. It's kind of the same thing.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
I wasn't done, Mr. Chair, but Mr. Combs, kudos to you for voting no on the, on the, just releasing it for sale. Because even reading what's in the, even what's written in the news report about it, sure, if you have a private entity that buys it and they're wanting to agree a rental agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, the Rec. Department, what's that figure? It's not decided. So you don't know what you're going to spend. You're kind of making a deal with the devil. And someone as physically conservative, as I've seen you be in Benjim for the years you've served on this board and the time I've been in this town, a little shocked that you jumped on that end of things.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to address the board? Do we have somebody on Zoom? Mike?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. My name is Robert Crosskin. I live at 239 Hart Towers Drive. And I am president of the Meschobee Beach Association. It's a group of homeowners, about 27 of us. And we have a beach right on the lake. I'm looking for a little guidance and maybe just some thoughts on how best to handle situations that are occurring. We have a beach, and we have a swim area on that beach. And all of us who have kids, grandkids who want to play there, want to do that safely. And we've had issues where boats have decided to come on in and anchor anywhere from 10 to 20 feet from shore, which is basically right in the swim area. And I have been going around trying to get as much information as I can on how this can be resolved. Because when I go and ask those nice folks who are coming in and anchoring if they would kindly just pull out a little further, be safe, I am told in no uncertain terms that I do not control the lake, that it is state-controlled, and therefore we have no rights to say they cannot have their boat right there. Again, having a 2,000 to 3,000 pound boat near where my eight-year-old granddaughter was swimming the other day is concerning. Not only from the prop, but if the anchor gives way with some heavy waves, it can be a problem. So my thought is, is that is the town liable or, I'm not saying liable, but does the town have any concerns about what's happening around the lake? I know Indian Point tried and failed to do something to create a zone that was a protected zone. They did that with the state. And I know Crystal Beach does have a swim area. I believe it is off limits to boating. But we would like to see something where we could get along with those people on the boats. I have a boat, and I go out on the lake and enjoy it. But we'd like to also have a safe area where we feel that we can swim without worrying about this. Some kind of a compromise. Does the, does the town have any responsibility as far as a police force or someone who could look into these kind of things? And is there any direction that you folks could give to our association to help us move forward so that we can find a proper resolution here?
Want that answered? I assume you do.
I would like any answers, yes.
The, the voters are accurate when they indicate that the lake is owned and supposedly managed by the Department of Environmental Conservation. Crystal Beach is a public swim area, and they are allowed to put out buoys for, in the swim area. I would suggest you contact the Department of Environmental Conservation to see what procedures you could go through that might possibly resolve a question for you.
Okay. Would that be Laura, and I'm not going to try and butcher her last name?
Gubaleki.
Delugaleki.
Gubaleki.
Delugaleki, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And again, does the town have any plans or does the town have anything to do with policing? Or if there is an incident where somebody gets hurt? Okay, I hope that doesn't come to that before we can find a resolution. What does the town feel about where they should be in this whole kind of thing as far as? I know there's a zillion people around the lake who have nothing more than to say this is my area and don't come into it. But we actually are a beach association, and we do have a beach.
No, the town does not have any, any jurisdiction over it. And as far as enforcement is concerned, that is the responsibility of the Department of Public Safety, particularly DEC. They are responsible for the Marine Patrol because they own the lake.
Okay. Well, I do have their number. I will try them next. I wanted to start with you folks. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
That's quite all right.
Okay, good night, Pat.
Anyone else on Zoom who wishes to address the board? Items not on the agenda? Guess we don't have any. We'll move on. Board appointments, written requests?
Excuse me, sir, I have just two more questions.
Yes, Pat.
With the sale of the CVS building, is that going to include the land? Or will that remain within the town ownership?
I believe it would include the land. That's just my, that's just an opinion. I am not an attorney.
The other thing is, is there any possibility that the sale of this, the fund, and this may have to be a voting issue, but can the funds from the sale be put into a special Recreation Department Building Fund? Would that be something to be considered?
Building fund or rental?
Building fund.
What would you do about the rental?
Taxpayers are going to have to pay for that, but eventually.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just wondering if that's a consideration or if that's something that would have to go through the voters.
Joe, you have a, sorry, you had your hand up.
Yes, I was going to address Pat's first point, first question, and I think it's a very good one. And frankly, I believe the Select Board would have an obligation to consider possibly subdividing the land to retain some of the grounds that otherwise go with the property.
Okay. Hopefully that answers your question, Pat. Okay, anything else? We'll move on. Board appointments, written request?
Jim, you got a hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mary?
Just one question.
Sure.
Is there any possibility that this can, this can be resolved?
Be what?
The decision to sell Castleton Village School can be resolved? By the voters, is that?
You mean reconsidered, Mary?
Reconsidered.
If it was reconsidered, it would be, have to be reconsidered by both Hubbardton and Castleton, of course, not just Castleton.
And there's no opportunity for Castleton to buy Hubbardton out?
There's always that opportunity. Hubbardton is entitled to 11% of the revenue. They are also required to pay 11% of the expenses, and Castleton would pay 89% of the expenses. And 89% of the revenue.
And what would have to take place from the tax, from the citizens of the town of Castleton to get this board to reconsider?
You mean both boards? It'd be both board, both boards voted on it.
Start to be proactive and say Hubbardton will buy you out.
I, you know, you start getting into the money and the finances, and we've got real problems, but anyway, I'm not going to go down that road. I believe there is a method where we have to advertise it for 30 days. If there is a petition submitted, I believe it'd have to be submitted to both towns for a vote, then fine. And if that happens, I'm sure there will be accurate information on expenses and implications to the taxpayers of both towns. Anything else? We're going, okay, we've covered, we've covered that. Are you going back the same one, Sean, or what?
I'm just curious about a 30-day timeline.
About what?
When you add a pulse, it would be 30 days from now.
We have 30 days, we have 30 days from, I believe, from the vote, Mike, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to call it the, I don't want to misquote something. I sent it to the board, so you guys had it as well. It's, I think it's titled 19 statutes 1061. I'm going to look it up right now.
So I believe it would be, because you're not bonding money, so it would just be 5% of the registered voter.
It's, it is 5% of the voters. The petition has to be 5% of the voters.
It's approximately 150 names or a little more.
For, for here in Castleton.
Yeah, I have no idea what Hubbardton's number would be.
It's 24 VSA 1061.
Once again, I won't pretend to know.
Let me read this so everyone hears it.
Just summarize it.
Well, it says, it's titled 20, it's 24 VSA 1061, 1061. Conveyance of real property. If the legislative body of a town or village desires to convey municipal real estate, the legislative body shall give notice of the terms of the proposed conveyance by posting a notice in at least three public places within the municipality, one of which shall be in or near the municipal clerk's office. Notice shall also be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the municipality. The posting and publication required by this subsection shall occur at least 30 days prior to the date of the proposed conveyance. Unless a petition is filed in accordance with subdivision two of this subsection, the legislative body may authorize the conveyance. And it talks about a petition, 5% of the legal voters of the municipality. Objecting to the proposed conveyance is presented to the municipal clerk within 30 days of the date of posting and publication of a notice required by subdivision one of this subsection.
That it, Mike?
And there's a lot more, but that's the gist of it.
Got what you need, Mary? Okay. Okay, can we move on then? Appointment of Michael Scover, Planning Commission, one year. Did we do that one?
No.
No. Okay, is there a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Add a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of appointing Michael Scover, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And we also have Kevin Fenton, Cemetery, Historical Cemetery Association, for one year. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the historical cemetery appointment? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, does that take care, I think that takes care of that.
That's it, right?
Right. Moving on, purchase of office supplies for the Select Board members. Mike, you have some information on that?
What I wanted to just bring to the attention of the, of the board is the Select Board doesn't have a very large budget for office supplies internally. And so I just wanted to get your feelings on how you want me to pursue this, because I can overspend it. And it will be absorbed, most likely, by money that doesn't get used by stipends. If people don't accept the stipend, but that's, I don't know at the end of the year if who's going to decide they don't want it. So that's one, and then other purchase services as well. So the stuff is not cheap. So I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention that I'm, how do you want me to handle this stuff? Because it's not, I don't, you're not a typical department, so I don't really have, you know, I'm not dealing with a typical situation, I guess.
Okay. What are your thoughts, folks?
I need written, I need written material, whether I do it or you do it for me. I just can't do a computer and read it, you know, especially if it's that long.
We're, we're talking here about definitely materials for Select Board members on indication, on Select Board business, right? Is that correct?
I guess I'm, I don't yet understand the issue. Is the question, what are you going to do about the costs incurred by, for example, making copies of materials for the Select Board?
No, the material, if we do it at the office, it's all part of our normal routine business. But if we purchase items for home use, then it starts really eating away at your small budget. And if you, if you come to me later and say, we want to do something, and I say, well, we've eaten up that budget by buying home, supplies for home offices, then I just want to make you be aware of that before it happens. So, for example, Mary Lee, we buy ink for Mary Lee. I've given people rooms of paper, which is fine. That's, paper's probably the cheaper, the ink is really, is one of the most expensive things that we buy. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because if you want, if you come at me at the end of the year and say, we want to purchase something, and I say, there's no money there because you've used it all, I just want it not to be a secret. So, you know, so either I print stuff, if you send me the stuff that you want it printed, we print it, put it in your mailbox, you can come to the office and get it. Or we continue to buy for those that need it for a home office, to print stuff at home. Or both ink, paper, whatever.
Joe?
My personal inclination would be to have you or Karen do the printing. I do a fair bit of printing, but I'd, all the big jobs I'd rather you did. And, you know, it's not just paper, I don't get ink from you, but one of these days my printer's going to die. So I think if, as much of this that you can take care of in your office would be best.
Which we can certainly do.
Okay.
The only difficult thing is if we can get it all in one day, it would be fine. But I'd hate to run up here at $5 a gallon every day to pick up something.
And that's, I mean, I guess the frequency of it is, I don't, everybody's probably different, so. What we can certainly, if you let us know, and it's within the early part of the day, or it's not at 4:30, we can print it that day and put it in your mailbox. But I'd ask that if you do that, to send it to me and to Karen, so that it makes sure he catches one of us.
Okay, anything else on this? Do we need a motion on this? Or is that the consensus? Don't need one, okay.
It's an awareness thing.
You all set, Dick?
Yeah, I'll just do what I've been doing. Anything big I have Karen print for me. Anything small, I just do it and don't worry about it.
Okay, Mary Lee, move on? Sure. Sedarac proposed changes of bylaws and charter. We have the proposals for the changes. I believe Mike has highlighted them for us.
Those, that's, I didn't highlight anything, just to let you know, that's all Mary highlighted.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
The changes were.
Actually, PD, PD Terrell did on her computer sheet. What you see is the additions that she made.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the Community Development and Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee bylaws as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there discussion?
Which one?
One says bylaws, Mary, at the top, and then the other one is the original document that kind of established the Sedarac.
So the new one is the one that says bylaws?
Bylaws, and then the other one would be more of a mission statement? I didn't develop any of these.
Well, they both look the same, and they say almost identical.
Very similar, I would agree with that.
And I want to know which one's the one, which is the new one?
This is, they're both new.
Okay.
This is the bylaws, and this is the mission statement. You'll see that the mission statement outlines the different officers and the charts. I don't know, we're working with what we were given.
Okay. I thought they were separate, and I liked this better than that, but they're not separate.
Well, this is bylaws, so they're one and, we're going to work from both of them. But because we wanted to change the bylaws, and then we looked at the mission statement, we were like, well, the mission statement can't be different. Can't have different verbiage, so we made it, the important stuff match.
I sat here, sure they're doing to me.
Okay, any other questions on this? Joe?
Uh, yes, a few. And I'm, I share Mary Lee's confusion about these two documents. It is even more confusing that this is not labeled the mission statement. But the bylaws were the ones that I went over with the fine-tooth comb. And the second paragraph, two-thirds of the way down, refers to the Rutland Economic Development Corporation. My understanding is that that organization no longer exists. But an organization, a successor organization is called the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region.
So in 2020, the town gave this to us. We're just working with what we were given. So if that is, if that's incorrect or needs to be changed, we'll likely change that.
I'm saying that if you're going to update these, you should update the terminology of the organization that you're.
So what part of that is that, Joe?
The Rutland Economic Development Corporation no longer exists.
Okay, where are you seeing that?
Two-thirds of the way through the second paragraph.
Oh, yeah, okay. And what is it called now? Do you know?
I do. It's called the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. On page two, first line refers to the Director of Parks and Recreation. That's a title I've never heard. I may be wrong about it, if it's existed for a while. But I thought we had a Director of Recreation or a Recreation Director.
When I changed the, when I, I'll answer that. When we did the job description change and added all this stuff in there about parks and our facilities, I changed it to Director of Parks and Recreation, so it covered not just the recreation itself, but the facilities.
Apologize, thank you for clarifying. In the box in the middle of the page, there are four references to town residents. But I think on page one, we said that the members don't have to be from the town of Castleton, they could be from an adjoining town. So I would think it'd be better to call that local resident.
And that would be fine. Can we, please understand that we were given these documents, and we've been trying to work with them for the past few years. Now we are trying to fix them, and this is our first run at it. I mean, we've had our board look at it, we've had Mike look at it. So this is the first time that the, in theory, the group that gave us this is helping us fix it. So I welcome the.
I'm just urging internal consistency. If you're going to make the one change about adjoining towns.
We had no idea whether or not anybody would let us, it was okay to have other people from out of town, so.
Can I speak on that same thing? Why would we want other towns on it? I can see if they owned a business here, but why would we want other town residents? Is there, is there a reason?
Yeah, we thought that there could be somebody, a resident of an adjoining town that would have a, whether they actually owned a business in Castleton or not, may have a significant interest in promoting the area, not just Castleton. And so we thought that, you know, like, for instance, the gentleman who was all about the internet, had lived in Hubbardon, but he was, he is or was and will continue to be an asset for this committee, even though he doesn't live in Castleton. Does that pretty well answer it, Mary?
Tim doesn't live in Castleton?
I thought he lived in Hubbardon.
Tim Monks?
Yeah.
One of them lived in Hubbardon.
He lives, Tim Monks, he lives in Castleton, he lives on Johnson's.
The other guy lived in Hubbardon.
Yeah, Mark.
Mark.
But another prime example is Zach Colesworth.
Yes.
Zach has had a house here in town, then he moved to another town, but maintained his house here. He's very active in his, in a family business that also has property on the lake. And he was on this lunch board, and his heart is still here. He very much adds good youthful energy. Our other member was Christina Ryan. She brought to us a whole slew of tools. Her kids go to school here. And now they live in Hubbardon State in the new economic real estate sales, they sold their house. They get equal to what they sold, they ended up in Hubbardon, so she has now the right from the board, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions?
I'm not objecting to it, but I think in the chart, it should town, should have a slash and say town resident or local or adjoining town or something. I think it should be consistent all the way.
I think local is the appropriate word, because.
Joe, anything else for you?
Yes, one further point. Under officers, current statement is a chairperson shall be elected annually by a majority vote of the Sedarac members. This implies to me a majority vote of all Sedarac members, even those not attending the meeting. I think it would be better to delete the phrase by a majority of the Sedarac members, which would allow you to use your rules on the quorum to make a decision.
For clarity, Joe, exactly what words do you want to strike?
Which page are you on?
Page three.
Page three, under officers. First line, shall be elected annually. The next phrase, by a majority vote of the Sedarac members, and, I'm sorry, by a majority vote of the Sedarac members should be deleted, in my opinion.
Just be elected annually and then subsequent approval by the select board?
Right.
I would agree with that.
Okay, a chairperson shall be elected annually by a majority vote? And then, and subsequent approval by the select board depend on the due.
I was suggesting you delete by a majority vote as well.
Okay.
It's implied. You can't make decisions without a majority vote.
Chairperson shall be elected annually, comma, and subsequently approved by the select board, or something along those lines?
Yes.
No, we need to get this right, Mary, I agree.
Anything else, Joe?
No.
Mary Lee, you all set?
I'm all set.
How about you, Dick?
I would suggest that I'd be willing to withdraw my motion, and Mary can tune this up and resubmit it next month.
Okay.
Well, how about the very next meeting, because we want?
That's fine, too.
Fine. Anything else on this?
So I'm going to withdraw my motion?
Someone to withdraw a second?
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so the second in the motion is withdrawn, and hopefully we'll be back in the next meeting, Mary.
Could I? Just because it's one point person, if we fix it, select person, Joe Mark, can we just send it to you and make sure we covered everything?
Of course.
Just another set of eyes before we send it out.
Yep.
Okay, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, so I'm not sure, is the mission statement coming back as well, or is that still in play? Because that wasn't discussed.
Because we can fix that, too. We can put boldly mission statement, that would be helpful.
And shouldn't they?
What I'll do, Mary, is I'll, now that I understand, I didn't understand this, I was wondering why the redundancy. I'll take a look at this and give you some feedback as well, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, if you carry it to the old ones.
Now that I understand what the question is, maybe I can come up with some answers.
Okay, we'll move on to employee appreciation compensation. Mike, I believe we have a letter from, communication from Mike regarding this. Is there a motion? No motion? No motion.
I would make a motion that we endorse the plan for employee appreciation detailed by the manager on June 27, Amendmental of June 27, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, discussion.
First question I have is, should I be recusing myself from this? Because my wife is a full-time employee.
Yes.
Don't go sit in the audience. If there's some reason.
Hope nobody else has to, we're down to three.
I have a copy of that letter.
No, here, here.
So if I had questions.
I have a question, just one, too. You've got these figures that are going, you know, for different things like Crystal Beach or the dump or what, a transfer station. What is the total amount, grand total of the whole thing here?
I don't believe I gave you a total, because you could have picked and choose from this, so I didn't go that far to give a grand total. I can do that while we're, during the rest of the meeting, hold on.
Anything else, Mary Lee?
No.
Nope, that wasn't.
Joe?
Well, I guess I would say that I'm generally supportive of the concept. I, when it comes to some of these categories of employees and volunteers, I think they fall on different points of a continuum in my mind as to how how much, honestly, how much sacrifice the individuals that we're contemplating appreciating have contributed. I mean, as a member of this board, for example, which presumably is included in this, I don't feel like the current conditions, either in terms of the pandemic challenges that we have been through or going through, or, for example, cost of living issues, needs to be addressed for me. I mean, I feel much more supportive of addressing the individuals who have been, for example, first responders or office workers, or people who have had to carry on the work of the town under some, at times, trying condition. So that's one of the ways in which I would be inclined to approach this, is to sort of make some decisions about the groups that are of highest need to appreciate, and those who could be appreciated, should be appreciated, but probably don't pass a threshold that I would establish for, for example, monetary compensation. That's one comment I would make.
Any others, Joe, or is that it?
Well, I think Mike might have had a response to.
Yeah, I know, he's, go ahead, Mike.
So on paragraph three on page two, the Select Board's already provided some of that incentive to the fire department through that last resolution, so that would be taken off the table. But as far as first response, you provided some relief there as well, or appreciation, I should say, by increasing their point system as well. So they're, so the only real, I guess, first responders would be the police department. Because we, you've already, you've already done something for fire and EMS. It's just really about police, and then, then it goes, then the stuff goes into the full-time and permanent part-time employees. So I think it really gets narrowed down to permanent part-time employees and potentially discussion about the police department. But I know that there was ongoing union contract negotiations as well. I'm not sure where that would fall into the mix if, with decision-making. I'm not sure where that would fall into the mix if, with decision-making, but may, probably not, but I'm not, I can't speak for Joe or Dick on that, so. So I guess it's narrowed down already, you're taking some of that money out of there because it's already been appropriated, or it'd be, it's in a resolution. But the, if, if I could even get an agreement from the majority of the board about the Crystal Beach passes, the transfer station passes, that's, that's moving forward. That's been brought up several times over the last three years with members of the employees and volunteers. Is, it started off with that incentive of how do we recruit people and then, and retain people on our volunteer agencies like the fire department and EMS? One was the beach passes and the transfer station pass, so.
Mary Lee?
I really don't object to any of this. I really wanted to just know the bottom line, because I think it's great to give these little perks to.
Thank you, appreciate that comment.
To our employees.
I, I do, I can add it up. It probably won't be right now unless you want to wait for me to, to do that, but, and bring it back to a subsequent meeting and give you a little bit granular detail on it. I know that the fire department, I did talk with the chief and a couple of the officers and they're, they're, they're also, they're appreciative of it, but they also want to put some stipulations on it. It's not just a, here's a, some monetary incentive and you don't meet milestones. So some of it, you know, they want to make, have them to meet milestones, like they've finished firefighter one, or, you know, they, they have to meet the whole, the criteria of their bylaws, like how many meetings, that's, they have to do that anyway, but if they want to increase that to say you need to attend 90% of it rather than 70%, I know that's, that was their thoughts originally. And I don't, and I haven't gone into any more further details with, with the chief. I think it really lies with him at this point to have that discussion and with his folks and come back to us. But they're appreciative of, of what was done, both for the point system and for recruiting incentives.
Joe?
I'm sorry.
Just a comment on that. I, I, if, if this is going to be a gesture of appreciation, I don't think it should be framed in a pre quo, quo manner. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be in favor of that, you know, well, we're going to give you this one-time bonus, but only if, you know, you increase your contributions or output or something like that.
Well, I'll try to clarify, it wasn't for those that are serving now. It was in ref, it was in regard, in regards to recruiting new people. So if, say there was a 500,000, or 500,000, wow, you guys are really generous, there was a $500 incentive, they just wouldn't give them $500 and then they don't have to do anything, like they don't attend the meetings by the bylaws or that kind of stuff. So it was, to try to clarify, it wasn't for those that have been serving and they get this appreciation thing, it was for, under the recruitment portion of the stuff for the fire department. I'm not sure if that changed your mind or not.
Well, can you, I, I read this a while ago. Can you point me to the recruitment language in this?
There's nothing, I don't see anything in here for recruitment. It was part of that resolution that you, that they, so it's not, doesn't, I don't see it in here, Joe. It talks about the point system, which was already addressed in the, in the resolution, but the resolution had the incentives for recruiting. This does not.
So my assumption, having read this, was that this is for past service. That was the way I viewed it. And, and not as something that was to provide a recruitment incentive or enticement.
Right, you are correct in that. That's not, that's a fact.
Anything else? What question do you think I'll ask in Mike?
Is it in the budget?
Yep.
Well, I think I said in the beginning, this is, this is one of those considerations that you might want to look at. ARPA funds is one of the things that ARPA could be used for. So I would encourage the board to do that because you've already made the resolution for end of year and this didn't make, didn't, wasn't considered at the last meeting, so didn't get, didn't get the, didn't see daylight, I guess. So that resolution's been made, so it's, we're past the first of the year, past, past the end of the fiscal year, so this would either be done at the end of the fiscal year this year, coming up, if subject to a budget surplus, or you guys, you, the, the select board says, we're just going to pay it out of the general fund or we're going to use ARPA. Those are the two big things I think you can.
Don't we have a meeting coming up in the near future on Arkham?
Yeah.
Arkham funds, yeah. Isn't that maybe the time we want to bring this back up again?
That's for the monetary stuff. Do you, do you, you want to include the beach pass and the transfer station pass into that same category, or do you think that you could approve something like that without?
I think we should do the beach pa, pass right away because it is summer.
Is there a motion on the beach pass and the transfer station?
I make a motion that A and B, the beach pass and the transfer station, be considered and done.
Is there a second? Yeah, a second, any discussion?
I just have a, a question from the perspective of our two organized employee groups. Can we extend benefits without consultation with the unions? Well, I know there's a provision in the police contract that allows us to do that.
There is one in the personnel policy as well, and ASME clearly states that they, they're not, they won't object to giving employee incentives, so.
Benefits.
Are you referring to the beach pass and the transfer station?
Yes.
Is that what we're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
So if those are permissible, I'm ready to vote on this.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Those are voted, I appreciate it.
Anytime, Mike.
So Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're tabling item three on this, item three and four?
Pardon?
You've approved items one, one A and one B, and then items two through four are your table in pronouns.
Correct.
Then we'll rejoin the board.
Okay, change to personnel policy about benefits for permanent part-time employees. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, this, what we found in the personnel policy, there was, there was, this topic was discussed in two places and it wasn't consistent. So under the general provisions, and then on the back page, eligibility of benefits. So this came to light because I had, I hired a part-time employee and said I would like to, we gave her the personnel policy and she came back and said, I'd like to participate in dental. I don't need the other stuff, but I'd like to participate in dental. And you read this, in one place it says that she could, in another place it says she cannot. If you're looking for me to provide a recommendation, I would, I would recommend that the town be consistent across the board with how we're treating different groups. And I would say, offer the benefits to the permanent part-time employees, not just seasonal, you know, and they pay the prorated portion of that, subject, subject to any rules of the carrier, the insurance carrier. If an insurance carrier says they have to meet some criteria and we say, we offer it to them, we can't go against what the insurance carrier's saying. So we have to have some language, I guess I would say, subject to the rules or policies of the insurance carrier.
So what exactly are you asking us to do right now?
To clarify, these, these two places, to, to offer part-time, permanent part-time employees benefits at a prorated amount, depending on, like we have people that work 23 and a half hours, we have people that work 29 and a half hours, we have people that work 20 hours. So we, we consider, there are certain positions that we include, like the accounting secretary, that's permanent part-time. Justin Shereco on the police department, he's a permanent part-time, is, because he has two different, he has two different functions there. Jonas is a permanent part-time. Mary, Joe is a permanent part-time. So we're, we're talking, it's a small, it's a small sampling of our workforce, but.
So the language you're asking us to approve doesn't exist yet. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and I'm not sure, again, without, I don't know what was, I don't remember what was negotiated or what you guys are still negotiating with NEPBA, but I think that was brought up in there and I don't, we're not talking about it now, but maybe it's just consistent with that language.
Well, I think I, I may agree with where Dick is going on this, and that is that it would be helpful to, to receive a proposal from you as to what you would like to say.
That pretty much sums it up.
We have one other question up above, when it's talking about email messages that are intended to be temporary, non-substantive communications may be routinely discarded. Who determines whether they can just go because of the open law, open?
We've, we've, we've contacted the Secretary of State's office and they pretty much said if you have a question about throwing something out, that call them first. So that's kind of the rule we're playing by right now, that way we don't discard something we're not supposed to.
I know they had said in one of the meetings that I had to keep all my emails because somebody might want to see them.
It's subject to the.
Kill my whole computer, but.
Same with your phones. Okay, there's public phone.
Just on that point, and not related to the topic, am I correct in understanding that we're going to be moving at some point to a town-based email system for people like us?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's, they're starting that, tomorrow's the 12th, right? Starting tomorrow with, doing the infrastructure, but everybody will have on the same email domain. So it'll be a castletonvt.org, but it will be probably like J mark at, you know, so that's, we're going to go to that, so we can do, we can use the full capabilities of Microsoft Office Suite, the, and we can put, put stuff out there using, God, what's it called?
Want to look?
But anyway, that way we can share documents and you don't have to, your email box isn't be clogged up with, you know, 25 megabyte file. We can post them out there and everybody that's on that domain can get, that you, being given permission to that file or that folder can get to it.
Back to the personnel policy, Mike. Would it be reasonable to ask you to, to create the language you're looking for?
Yeah, certainly.
And give us a proposal?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not opposed to the concept at all. But I can't approve something we don't have.
No, I get it. It's a, if you want to table this until next meeting, I'll have something to the language.
There's been no motion, so we just.
We didn't have a, we didn't have a motion. Okay, we'll move along. Public Safety Committee, update to the full board.
Well, actually, I hate to say this, but because I just barely got those minutes just immediately when the meeting started, I'm really not prepared to say much other than, at this point, I'll say that the, we have met with the, with three of the officers from the fire department about, what, two weeks ago, Mike?
Yeah.
It was Jim, Jim, Lemie and myself, and we had some discussions concerning standard operating guidelines and where they are and they need to be consolidated and cataloged so that we know what we have and what we need, so that we can figure out what needs to be created. We went on to talk about getting the building into OSHA compliance, which is close, cleanliness of the building, we discussed that, and the plans to, to make that more streamlined and make it happen more often. We also discussed with them and approved preliminarily at least their truck committee, which they proposed to us, and I won't get into who's on that at this point, but it's from three officers, three regular members and the chief. So their first task is to come up with a strategic plan for what needs to be replaced when, and we're looking forward to meeting with them in late July to see what they come up with. That pretty well come, summed it up, Jim, or did I miss anything?
Except for the fact that three officers and three members of the department and the chief would break the tie, I believe there was disagreement on that.
However, whatever their, whatever that committee comes up with for recommendations, they have to get the approval of the Public Safety Committee and the select board before any purchases can be made anyways. So there's an element of control there, that's why I went along with it in spite of maybe not really liking it, but we got to start somewhere.
Hope this will come to us.
Yes.
Yeah. We're, we're going to have another meeting on late July, I forget the date.
26th of July.
I can tell you in a second.
Yep.
It's on your, it's on your last page of your minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, the 26th of July, and they're, they should be coming back to us with some of their homework done and we'll see if we can make more progress.
All right, can we move on to park and ride? Are you all set, Dick, on that?
Sure.
Okay, move on to park and ride grant opportunity. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I just came to, this just opened up, it just came to me last week and a couple of emails, but they, there's a part, there's an opportunity to apply for a park and ride grant, and I think in the previous meeting I shared with you that there's some work that needs to get done down there that the state's already agreed to help us with, and that's that refer being the sign for Fort Warren. I have not heard back from the chapter, the Amstory chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution yet, I'll have to follow up with them to see what I can get them to do, since their monument down there is, they placed it, they're out of Rutland. But I'd like to apply for this permit because it, it, the town doesn't own the land, but we do have the 1111 permit from the state because it's in the right of way for both off from 4A and east Hubbard Road. So by applying for this, we could get the, we could get it resurfaced, we can get the place, a new bus stop in there because that one's falling apart. So there is some, there is an opportunity to make that one place, when you come into this town from the east, that you have to look at, make it more appealing with landscaping. I talked to the tree warden, he's going to take down that old spruce tree that's dying. And we were talking about what, what we could plant there, if anything, benches, something that, people use that place as meeting places, like exchange children, like for custody things, and if we, if, and if we make it appealing, when people come into this town, they just don't look like we've abandoned something. That's what it looks like right now, we've kind of given up on it. So I'd like to apply for this, this grant, and I can't tell you at this moment, though, looking at this, how much the municipality would have to pay, a 20% match, because I'd have to get some quotes. But I'd like to apply for it. If you don't, we could always turn it down, or if it's too expensive, pay it back, but I want to at least start having a conversation with Rutland Regional Planning Commission about applying for this, because I'll enlist their help to pull down data.
Okay, is there a motion, Joe?
I would move that we authorize the town manager to submit an application to the 2023 municipal park and ride grant demonstration program.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second, discussion?
You have no idea on, on figures?
Not yet, because if we resurface and pave it, I have no idea what that's going to look like when this grant finally comes around, because the price is so volatile with, with stuff, so I'd, I'd come back to the, to the board with an update once I get that information, but.
Could be 100,000, it could be 500,000.
Likely it's going to be in the tens of thousands, like, because paving isn't, it's not going to cost a lot to pave that, so 20% of the paving cost, a bus stop, some plants, we're not talking a lot of money, we're probably talking, our share of it would probably be less than $10,000.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Okay. All right, moving on to we're way behind schedule, Mike. The very brief manager's report.
We're missing the sunfish.
Oh, missing the sunfish. I'm sorry.
Sunfish are much on my mind these days. Well, we, uh, if, if I may, uh, we have, uh, collected sunfish, uh, donations for our youth sailing program over the years, and have received probably in the neighborhood of a dozen donations, some of which were boats that we didn't, uh, want to use, but the owner was happy to give it to us with the understanding that we would sell it and use the funds we got to support the program. Other boats were retired when we got better boats, and, uh, some of the boats that had been given to us were badly damaged and heavy. So we're always in, in a continuous process of trying to make sure the kids have access to boats that are decent. And, uh, of, of late, uh, we have learned about a boat that is, uh, in great shape. It would be the best boat in our fleet, and it is a surprisingly reasonable price. It is twelve thousand ninety-five dollars. Sorry, one thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. Excuse me. Didn't want to give you a heart attack, Jim. And, um, I would like to, um, purchase this and retire one of the forty-pound overweight boats that we're currently using.
Okay.
I, I did talk to Melanie before, just because if there's a motion being made to make sure it, because we don't want to wait on this, so the motion would have to include that you authorize the purchase of the sailboat now. It'll make the next warrant, but we can, and also that you, we can cut the check immediately, so that the treasurer will be here tomorrow, and a check can be processed, and we can go over and pick up the boat. So it's a little bit off course from what it normally would be because of the timing. So if you, if you end up making a motion, just please include that, to, to purchase it now with the check being cut now.
Do we have the money in the budget?
Yes.
We do. Okay, thank you.
It's in the sailing program.
In the sailing, that's what I figured it was.
I guess maybe include that, that's.
All right.
How many people are in the program?
We have, uh, fourteen this week and thirteen next week. And as, specifically, we would be purchasing this with your approval from Ron Patterson of Antrim, New Hampshire.
Is there a motion?
Well, nobody else will.
Well, I, I was thinking you should, Joe, you have all the pertinent information.
I would like to move that the, uh, Select Board authorize the purchase of a sunfish sailboat from Ron Patterson of Antrim, New Hampshire, uh, at the price of one thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second? Discussion.
Does that motion also have to include that it be authorized the town manager to cut the check tomorrow?
It should, so we can, that way Nancy can do it.
You'll have to amend your motion, Joe.
That's to be determined.
Yeah, the town, we're going to pick it up.
Another possibility is that, uh, I will take a trailer to New Hampshire on my visit to Boston with Nancy on Thursday, August fourth, and, uh, we will pick it up on Saturday, August sixth. That's not the preferred plan, but that would be one option. So what, what is it, the, how, how should I amend my motion?
You should amend your motion to include the authorization for the town manager to have a check to buy, purchase it immediately, and have the town manager issue a check tomorrow.
And it'll show up on the next warrant.
Okay. Everybody clear? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We got the sunfish, okay.
I'll take you out on it, Jim.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm not sure there's room for both of us on it.
Ah, I used to raise them. Alrighty, uh, go ahead, Mike. Panel, manager's report.
Any questions?
Any questions? Very good, Mike. Any questions for Mike on the manager's report?
Anything at all. I highlighted the changes.
Mike, you haven't got a question yet.
No, but I'm just letting people know that are in the audience, you don't see this.
That's okay.
This does get posted with the minutes out there, so if you're looking for something, it's there.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
Thought it was quite clear.
Yep. Mary Lee? No, Joe? All set? Dick?
No, we're good.
I'm all set. Thank you very much, Mike.
Any questions, I have to ask them anyways.
You set a record. Okay, purchase orders for approval. I don't believe we have any purchase orders. Nope. Warrants for approval.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number.
Excuse me, point of order?
Sure.
Uh, I, I am listed in the, uh, second, uh, warrant, number zero seven one one, uh, for a small reimbursement payment for parts that I bought for the sunfish program. That's on the last page, about ten lines down, so I would appreciate it if those, uh, that first grouping would be, could exclude zero seven one one, so that I can vote on it.
I can do that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number zero seven one one R for a hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Warrant zero seven zero seven for eighteen thousand six hundred and one dollars and fifty-five cents. Warrant zero six three zero for twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And warrant zero seven zero seven P for nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and nine cents. And warrant zero six three zero P for seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Discussion. Any, not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number zero seven one one for two hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I recuse myself.
I'll second it.
How much is that amount?
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Oh, with the, okay.
But then most of that doesn't go to Joe.
Right. That's why I wondered.
Almost all of it. Doesn't go to Joe.
That's why I wondered. Oh, I'm checking that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think there's a couple there I have to recuse myself of.
Yeah, I'll do those right now.
Yeah, I'm in red ink, crossed out, so I guess I don't have to worry about it.
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number zero seven one zero for a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, and warrant zero seven zero six P for five hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second?
And a second. I'll recuse myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion that we approve warrant number zero seven zero eight P for six hundred and thirty-two dollars and five cents. And warrant number zero six thirty-one P for six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Second?
I'll recuse myself.
You recused yourself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Dick recuses himself.
Sure, Joe. I'll start handing them down to you.
Thank you. This is the one that I'm.
Well, there might be, yeah, I don't.
This is the one that I'm not signing.
You're not signing zero seven one one.
Mike, Allison is on.
Yeah, she's on the per way.
Oh, you, you got her, okay.
Yeah, you played him like, Mike?
Uh, I don't know. After the last two nights, I don't, I've lost all faith.
They're still the best team money can buy, right?
Yeah, they have a, they haven't gone out and scouted that crazy for me.
It sucks spending more than the Yankees.
They, I think they have over the last, like, two years.
I got a text message, you know, on, when.
On account, make sure we got your number here.
I didn't get one today. I was waiting for.
Did you say text message?
Yeah, I, I get them, but I don't send them.
It goes, it comes back as a, as a blank, like, thought, like somebody's thinking.
I, I pick up the phone and call.
I'm going to start sending you text messages. Don't worry about that.
Those are just mercy wins. Six. Seven. Eight, nine, ten.
You got it, Jim. You got it.
Also for the boards. FYI stuff. Thursday, they're, they're going to be in here to start rewiring this room for all the audiovisual stuff.
Great. What about the conference room in the town office?
After that, they're going to do this one then.
So it's on the shortlist?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, um, Select Board comments and/or concerns. Mary Lee?
Knew I had it, didn't you? I was wondering what the, uh, status was on hiring a rec director. At what point you're at?
Interviews are also on Thursday.
Thursday.
Did I freeze that you had six people?
Correct.
We have talked about water going precision auto way back when, and also the flying slate. Do we do anything about that? Is that something that should be brought up and something done about it?
Well, if you're talking about the slate at, um, Camaro Quarry, the state's still involved with that one. There was some recent activity up there that, drew the attention of our police department and state police. Nothing, no rocks went out of the quarry or any of that, but we had to get some people involved, um, so that's ongoing. Our attorney is also still dealing with that, collecting all this data. We found a file like two and a half inches, three inches thick, um, in the zoning office, so that's been turned over to our attorney to so she can look at that and see if there's anything to consider, um, uh, in that case, or an ongoing, um, research. As far as the water on Beatty's property, the, we did go to the state on that originally, and they said there's nothing they're going to do about it until the road gets paved, because the water's got that, or the road's got that W effect right now because of the wheel ruts, and the water just comes all the way from Sam Hill Road all the way down, and he's the low point, and it discharges right there. So I had the engineer from the state over at V-Trans District Three office, and they said, there's nothing we can do. We can shim it, but that's not going to, that's not going to solve the problem. Well, what Steve was saying, the owner of the business, was water was coming off from the property of Dollar General. And I was up there the other day, and I happened to look, and there is, there is a drain that discharges from underneath their parking lot into his, but it's Barbara Back, it's not near the road. But I, I don't really know what we can do, since it's V-Trans, um, the road's theirs. I mean, the town wouldn't start putting money into, well, not only probably would we not, but it wouldn't be allowed to, um, put money into a state highway.
And my la, last complaint is, uh, minutes aren't getting done like they should be done in five days on any of the committees or anything.
I, I know Allison's on, um, I know she works on them diligently, but it's, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to put Allison on the spot, but, um, and I don't know, because she does the minutes for a lot of the meetings. I, I think the quality's gone up, but I, you're right, we haven't been meeting the timeline, and I don't really know how to, for me personally, to affect that.
It's just seem that's, that's the law, and it's supposed to be within five days, then it shouldn't be ten.
Is it five calendar days or five business days?
Five.
Five days.
Five calendar days.
And some of them are a couple months old.
That's a different, yeah, that's a different discussion, but.
Yeah, but they're all, all minutes are, come under the same thing of the five days. So I'm not saying just the select board minutes, I'm saying all their committee minutes as well. It's not being done timely.
I can say since Allison started doing the minutes, that the quality has improved, but she's taken on a lot more. But our, our past, our track record with, uh, somebody taking our minutes has not been as good as it is right now. And so finding someone to do that, we've advertised and advertised and advertised, so it's going to come down to an employee, the employees doing the, the minutes, and they, Allison can attend, I sat here all day today working on one set of minutes. So if it's going to start taking away from what we're doing, there's, there's, that's problematic as well, so I, I guess I don't really have a, an answer, besides I acknowledge the fact that we can get better at it, but I'm not sure if I can offer you an answer right now.
Can I offer a suggestion? One of the first things, when they're trying to solve a problem, one of the first things you need to do is figure out what exactly is the problem. So even just having some data, like, when are the minutes from this meeting published or put online? You're talking about have online five days from, you know, and, and then we'll figure out just where the issues are, and maybe we can figure out some way to support your staff or Allison or both to, uh, start solving these problems. We have to figure out exactly what the problems are first. So gathering some data would be the first, a good place to start.
What is wrong with having someone who serves on these committees take the minutes?
The only problem with that is if you're taking minutes and trying to participate, it's very difficult. Ask Joe on the village school. He was trying to take minutes and participate too, and it was quite difficult.
Okay. Well, I agree with that point, and, uh, to your question, Dick, about data, uh, we are now twelve days past the last CVS meeting without draft minutes. I'd rather share part of the burden of keeping, uh, taking minutes than have us be late.
Okay. Anything else, Mary Lee? You all set? Joe?
No, that was actually the only item I had as well.
You had it there? Okay. Dick?
I'm good.
I'm good too. Okay. Brief recap, items for follow-up? Anything we have to do on that, folks?
I'll follow up on the minute stuff.
You got that?
Yeah, I think if you could just start keeping track of when, you know, start, don't, don't, don't try to go back in history, but start today. The meeting today, when are the minutes published? And the meeting that happens tomorrow, the planning commission meeting, et cetera. And then maybe we can figure out what support is needed that we don't have. Because it's not, you know, it's always been my experience that generally speaking, people want to do a good job. You just have to make sure they have the tools to do that.
Joe?
Well, just a, one further comment. I, I, I believe that Mike has tried very hard to find individuals to take the minutes. And, uh, that seems to be a challenge, and it, we don't seem to have a way of overcoming that challenge, so. Well, just a, one further comment. I, I, I believe that Mike has tried very hard to find individuals to take the minutes, and that seems to be a challenge, and we don't seem to have a way of overcoming that challenge, so my, I would propose that we begin to do the minutes internally.
And what do you mean by that, Joe?
Well, that, that at least for some of our boards and committees, we create the expectation that a member of the board or committee will take the minutes with the understanding that they are required to post drafts within five days. And we can, to, to the extent that Allison has the capability of taking minutes for some boards and getting them posted in a timely manner, I think we should retain her for those purposes. But I don't think, at this point, we can expect her to do as many boards as she is doing.
That's basically where I was coming from.
And that's all, so Allison cares, so, and Katie Culpepper's got her hand up, so, for a question, but I will follow up with Allison to see what we can do to help provide some relief, because when she's doing back-to-back-to-back things, it's, I, I, like I said, I sat here for like four hours today, just listening to recording and trying to make minutes out of it, and it's just a long, arduous, laborious, boring process.
Okay, anything else, follow-up? Yes, Katie?
Hi, yeah, thanks. I was just gonna, with the meeting minutes, maybe, I like Rich's idea of soliciting some input, maybe that, what's that organization, the city league council, but every county has to do this and has the same state, state statute, but maybe they have some ideas? And maybe if they have people who do this, like now with Zoom and recordings, I know for me, I don't want Mike sitting around doing meeting minutes for four hours, I'm sure there's a lot of better things that he could do, but Mike, they might have some ideas for the struggles that you're having as far as getting drafts posted. The drafts are really important. I was at a DRB meeting, and they were saying things that I said, and I'm like, ah, that's not really how it went, so the drafts are really important for people who come and speak, and that it's just all accurately documented.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Anything else on recap? Not, okay, we need executive session, Mike? For what?
We need to, two of them.
Well, which one would you like first?
Let's do the, if you're doing no, the PBA, let's do that one.
Let's do, that's Labor Relations, correct?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for Labor Relations with the board and the town manager at eight thirty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.